Hello everyone. My name is Carolina Galeano and I will be your moderator for today's Town Hall meeting. I'm filling in for Michael Brown who is in New York covering the Montgomery College Raptors Women's Soccer Team at the NJC AA National Championship. Their first game is this afternoon at 3:00 PM, so you can follow their updates on Twitter. Good luck Raptors. We are in the second floor of the atrium of the Commons Building here at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. And Dr. Pollard wants to hear from you, so if you're around and you're watching this, please come on by. We encourage you to ask questions, comments, or introduce a new topic of conversation. So, you are always welcome to send your questions to TownHall@MontgomeryCollege.edu. If you're watching on Facebook Live, you can also post a question and a comment. And as always, you can find it via Tweet, you can Tweet us via @MontgomeryCall using the hashtag #AskDrPollard. I would love to ask your help by keeping your questions brief and always identify yourself by name. And now over to you, Dr. Pollard.
Thank you very much, my dear, and thank you all for being here today. I have a couple of things I'm going to do upfront to introduce certain topics and then, because I always know there are certain hot topics that are about this time in the semester and then we'll open it up. So let me start off by thanking all of you all for being here today. I know that November is about the time when things go crazy at the college in a lot of different ways, for lots of different reasons. But I also know it's also one of the busiest points as we start to wrap up some things that are happening. Many of our Montgomery College students today are in fact marching in a DACA march down in Capitol Hill. I think several of us have some buttons, "We want a Clean Dream Act." They're advocating peacefully and thoughtfully for the needs and interests of many of our students here at Montgomery College and our campus. And I have expressed institutional support for them and personal support. I think all of you all know, I've been fairly vocal on this issue and I also think that it's critical that we help Congress understand the need for a Clean Dream Act. I wish that I could be there with them, I actually would have been, except we had previously scheduled this. And our wonderful MCTV people go through a lot to make this happen, so trying to readjust a schedule was very difficult. But I hope that they know that we have our support. I've got their back on this issue and I know that many of us within the college community do as well. I also want to give out a shout out to everyone on campus who has been working on several key things. This is about the time of year, in addition to our athletics teams doing wonderful work, we see some of our academic programs really doing, I think, some key work with our students. The Maryland STEM Festival events this past week have been wonderful. We've had terrific hands-on activities to help introduce communities to our classrooms and laboratories. They had computer hacking, 3D printing, and astronomy going on and many other events. There has been some wonderful educational opportunities, so I'm very grateful for everyone who participates in that. Part of our job, as Carla and I have to talk about, is to turn the college inside out. So having the opportunity to invite the broader community to work with and understand our students and also the work we do, I think, is phenomenal. We also had our Humanity Days this previous week. We had 50 events that were active across the campuses, in the art, people, and culture of El Salvador. Thought that was a wonderful opportunity. I think that's the second largest immigrant population we have in the county, is the second, I think, El Salvadorian. So I think that's a wonderful opportunity for us to do some really great work in that space. We also had some fantastic displays, including one that's over in the CT Building, which I tremendously enjoy. I want to thank everybody for that work that you've done in their space. We're gonna, I'm gonna start today's questions off with two impending changes at the college, both of which I think have generated lots of conversations and interest. So I will repeat a few things here, but also hopefully give you an opportunity to respond to, ask questions of me and respond. The compensation study that we've been engaged in for the last, I don't know how long, a year or two, is moving from study to actualization. We're moving to a point now where we're actually going to be taking care of several key issues in that. In my Monday message to the college in my president's corner, I addressed that and I'm gonna get to that in just a moment. But I think another key issue at the college right now is security, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. Director Sean Harrison has been talking to her staff this week and has really been, I think, leading us in some very thoughtful ways around this issue. So I want to be very clear about some things and talk to you all about them so you can hear it come from me and certainly happily respond to any questions you may have. We know for a fact that no place is immune from violence that's happening right now in our society. It's happening across the country, whether it be in concert venues, schools, you name it, it is happening churches. And we also know the community colleges have not been immune from this. If you look at Umpqua Community College over on the East Coast, look at Lone Star College System down in Texas, and there's several others across the country, where we have seen violence move into our campuses. And we're very intentional about trying to ensure that we create open access and we want to stay open as the community's college. But we also know that we must create safe environments for our students to learn and for our employees to work and for our visitors who come to our campus to have a safety with that as well. So the college has taken a lot of steps over the last, probably year, year and a half in this space to address safety. This continues to be an issue that comes up probably two or three times a semester in our various governance systems and conversations that I have with my Monday breakfasts or my monthly breakfasts. So some things we have done, and I have some statistics to share with you, I think, are good. We've had active shooter sessions. We've had over 2,200 employees who have attended these active shooter sessions. I think that's very significant in terms of professional development. Our wonderful MCTV who you see here today has produced a video that has been watched by over almost 1,500 people throughout the college community. We've also improved our surveillance, video surveillance on both the Germantown and Tacoma Park Silver Spring campuses. We've upgraded over 100 cameras on those campuses. And that's a very exciting thing to know, that we have the ability to help monitor what is and is not happening in our campuses. We're gonna have a series of conversations that are gonna take place, excuse me about that. In addition, we've also had Narcan training for some of our security officers as it relates to opioid addiction and overdose, this new state law. And we have people who are trained on each campus as well as our CT Building and some of our other locations who are able to provide and administer Narcan as needed. We have done some new emergency mass notification system that we've put in place and new protocol for informing employees of visitors in certain areas of the college community. And we've also increased patrols by our security officers on all campuses. I think they're easily identifiable in their new uniforms and I see them oftentimes walking not only the periphery of our campuses, but also the interior and inside buildings as well. What I think is important, we've done a few things here that I think we're gonna be looking at. The most important element in all of a campus security program will be the personnel and the people who actually deliver the outstanding services that we have at our college campus. Recently, we conducted a study that recommended that Montgomery College transition to a hybrid safety and security model. Hybrid is a combination of different type of personnel, security officers, special police officers, some of which may be retired police officers, and commissioned police officers. They have different levels of training, different accreditation requirements and so forth to do that. 10 of the 16 community colleges in the state of Maryland have already a hybrid or commissioned force. So the Board of Trustees at its retreat in September reviewed a series of information about this, had very robust conversation, and have charged me to work with Dr. Warmack and her team to lead a series of conversations around the college community about exploring, should we as an organization look at moving toward a hybrid model? We're gonna be looking at policy implications, looking at training implications, and very intentionally looking at what the college community thinks about this, because we will be doing this as a college community. So as a result of that, you're gonna see, the next month, I believe, or so, let me look at my notes here, a series of conversations that are gonna be facilitated by AFS to discuss the potential transition, to understand people's support, understand people's concerns, figure out what types of issues we should be looking at. Dr. Warmack and Sean Harrison will be sending out some communication about these in the near future. And then hopefully will be able to then offer a recommendation to me that I will take to the Board about next steps. And if the Board acts on this, we'll be looking at this issue. I think the important part that people want to know is about how does this affect current staff. One of the things that Dr. Warmack and Ms. Harrison have been very clear to me is that if the Board adopts this new model, because again, I keep telling people, there's an "if," the Board may say, "All the research is out there, you told me this." They may say, "We don't really want to go down this pathway, we want to do a different pathway." Or they may say, "We want to go to a more robust pathway." I don't know that yet. We're gonna have that conversation with him. But what's important about that is that every security staff who wants to do so, if the Board adopts this, will be given the opportunity to train for new positions. We were able to secure some in the last budget cycle with the council. Safety and security continues to be a paramount issue, so if indeed the Board goes in that direction, rather than hiring security officers, we may move into a special police officer mode or another one, depending on the Board's action. We can't train everyone at one time. Right now, we know that we have insufficient staff and we can't pull people away from that. We're gonna begin to sit down and figure out some strategies in that space. We have to spread the cost of training over a reasonable period of time. I've come to understand that just because one says "make it so," it does not happen quite that way. So we have to spend a lot of time thinking about that. But here's an important part, and I think this is an important message, I want to make sure that people in TV land, internet land, hear me, is that the college is committed to promoting people who want to qualify as special officers if we able, if we move in that direction and who are able to attend and complete the rigorous training that's gonna be happening in that space. So you'll be hearing more from Marvin Mills, Sean Harrison, Janet Warmack in this space, because it's important for people to understand that, but more importantly, know that there is an open communication about that. I know there's lots of interest. Another big issue, always, this time of year continues to be one, is our compensation. As you know, Monday I sent a message out to the college community addressing this, providing some broad overstrokes on that. We've been talking about classification and compensation since I arrived at Montgomery College, seven years ago, over seven years ago. And we also know that this causes lots of anxiety, we know that it's one, there's a lot of consternation. As I always tell people, "Don't get in my pocket and I won't get in your pocket." So I understand what's happening there. So what I've said in this is that no, and this is an important point in why it took so long, because we had to have deep conversations about sustainability and viability. So what the Board and I have agreed to is that no faculty or staff or administrative jobs will be eliminated, no salaries will be reduced. Realigning, though, the college's compensation structure with their regional market is critical at this time, so that the college can pay closer attention to how people are paid and how we go about this. This is why we went through this compensation and classification study. The big thing is fiscal sustainability. The county and the state in particular are not going to be able to offer the resources they have to us in the past. They simply don't exist, the market has changed, the environment has changed. So as a result of that, many people are wondering how this is affecting employees. As I said, no one loses jobs and no one has a reduction in salary. The vast majority of college employees are just fine. Roughly 70% of our employees fall within the market range. That's gonna be great. So the majority of people are not affected in any way about this, they go forward and we keep doing. Those who fell above the market range, their compensation will be frozen. The reality about this is that if you are above what the market says, we're going to use the market as the place by which we make those decisions. Until they fall into market rates or fall back into line with the market, those rates will be frozen. For those employees whose compensation fell below the market rate, which is a very small number, less than 100, we will be raising their compensation to be competitive with the market. All of those employees, in December, all staff and administrators will be advised of their new job grades, that's the first part in the classification study. And if you fell above the market rate, you'll meet with your supervisor and HR professional who will talk you with, you can ask questions, understand the process more, and dig into the data as you see fit. There's going to be a series of forums, I hope that people take advantage of them to find out more information. I know a couple have already taken place, robust conversation, lots of dialogue. I want to thank Mr. Rup and his team who have been a part about that, been a part of it and led that. I've also asked at each one of those meetings to have SALT members, senior administrative leadership team members there who can hear and respond to questions that may come up. The other thing is that even before you learn about your new jobs, you can be able to find these out by going to each of these, on each of the campuses and also central services. You'll see we have some in the evening, some in the morning, some in the afternoon. So I'm hopeful that there will be a space and place for everybody. If there's a profound need or a timeframe that no one is able to attend, please let us know and we can see if we can arrange some additional ones to go into that. Couple other things about the classification and comp study. Full-time faculty and the five executive administrators are still in the process of being reviewed. Those five executive administrators are the president, the chief of staff, and the four senior vice presidents, that's actually six, are still being reviewed at this time and with full-time faculty. There will not be any changes in their salary and compensation until those studies are done and we're able to look at what the market says. No employee will be exempted from this process. Everybody is having the classification and compensation analysis done. And I'll also say that they will all be aligned with the market, so this is an important point. No one gets to have a special privilege, no one is having a different exploratory process, it's the same process being used for everyone. The important part about this is that we're making sure that we're trying to craft a highly effective and sustainable future for the college. Financially, this is a big issue for us because 80% or so of the college's budget is compensation and benefits. So the only place that we have the ability to grapple with these issues is within that. That means we want to pay people well, we want to recruit the best talent, but we also know that we have to stay in line with the market says, and it's very important for us for our long-term sustainability. So those are my introductory comments, I think I did that right. I have 15 minutes, so I'm gonna now turn it over and we're going to invite questions. I don't know if you have some already, or we'll go from there.
Yes, and I do want to encourage everybody to, if you have questions, let me know, raise your hand and I'll come to you. But I want to start one with one from the audience. So Dr. Vincent, I can just hold it for you.
That's why she was in cute shoes to ask the question.
So my question actually ties into something you already mentioned. As the Title IX Office begins working on the next climate survey, one of the questions that the work group was sort of grappling with has to do with the larger campus climate. And we were talking about how some more conservative students don't always feel that their opinions and perspectives are as valued in the classroom. And I was talking with a colleague about this, and from that colleague's perspective, the college's decision to have programming about DACA and things like that supported partisan politics. And I thought about it and I said, "Well, I don't really see it that way. I see this as us really supporting our institutional mission, vision, and values, and that transcends partisan politics." So I was curious what, how you would respond to a question and if you had anything you would add in a response or a question.
Thank you, Beth. So, Dr. Vincent, let me say a couple things about this, because I appreciate your question. I've heard that informally and formally in a couple spaces. And the college's position has been very clear about this for a number of years. This actually predates me, but also I think I'm proud to have helped lifted it up. The county recognizing early on that we all benefit from an educated populace. So regardless if you see this as a social justice issue, if you see it as an opportunity to help lift up populations who have been underserved in the community, the county has positive, yes, we believe those things, but let's look at this truly from an economic perspective. We all choose to live in an educated community because we know the benefits of that. We also know that in order to do that, education is the pipeline to do that. So continuing with the federal government who had a K-12 mandatory commitment to this, they have to respond to and serve students regardless of ability, background, and immigration status, our county said, "We will continue to support the college in this space, because we believe, at the end of the day, we all have both a recognized education as both a private good and a public good." So what I would offer to that is that the ability to advocate now has been something the Board of Trustees empowered me to do. There have been certain, I'm actually limited, interesting enough, by Board policy about what types of things I can and cannot speak to. And in fact, I can't take a position on issues on behalf of the college or endorse candidates unless the Board has a very specific rationale for that. In the time that I've been here, this is the only issue that the Board of Trustees has empowered me to speak to in that space. And that is because they've recognized the potency of what it means to be living in an educated community and recognizing that our county, who is our primary funding source, believes deeply in that pipeline to K-12 to support the economic prosperity. I think that I would love to have a healthy debate with anyone who would offer that this is not in the best interest of the county, this is not in the best interest of the college, because I don't believe that, both not from a political perspective, but for me, it's an intellectual one. I can't wrap my head around that as an intellectual argument. So for me, if we want to, and I do think there should have healthy spaces to talk and debate, I would love to see faculty in this space having a debate around many number of issues. The Board and I have chosen to advance this because we recognize, we believe that it's an economic issue for our county. We also recognize that if we don't take this up, we're also very concerned about the students that we already serve. And that's the part that I think is sometimes lost in this conversation. We can have broad conversations about national immigration policy, we could talk about all the great stuff that folks like you talk about and our social scientists talk about, all of that, that's important. At the end of the day, we've chosen to posit this as a student issue that we currently serve as an economic one for our county. And I'm hopeful, I think that every opinion is valued and warranted and should have the opportunity to be expressed. That doesn't mean that we're always gonna agree. And at some point, and as we all know in academia, that's part of the reason why we chose to come to it, because we could have safe places to have those types of conversations. And if someone feels they can't have those conversations, that concerns me and I'd be happy to work with anybody to figure out how to do it. Thank you, Dr. Best.
We have a question that was emailed to us by Chris Von Villan. "I am interested in hearing the president's views on current conditions in the Office of Public Safety and Emergency Management, her support of the director's vision, and how the vision is being cast with various stakeholders and decision-makers. I have heard where the director wants to take the agency and I'm fully behind her. I would like to hear from further up the chain."
I guess I'm further up the chain, huh? I think I talked about this a little bit in my intro. Chris, did you say his name is? His name, Chris?
Chris.
Okay, Chris, thank you for the question that you emailed in. I'll offer a couple observations. I was one, probably two years ago, who thought that campus safety, maybe even three, four years ago, campus safety was something that was important and we were doing it and we were doing it well. No doubt that we were. We have talented people who've been doing this work at the college for a number of years. What I have come to recognize is that the environment is changing around us. We have an outstanding institution, we have outstanding people who work here, and we have the opportunity to serve phenomenal students who come to us each and every day for that economic pathway, that learning that we talked about earlier. But we don't operate in a vacuum. There are things that are happening around us that we have to be responsive to. And probably within the last, I'll say, three to four years, I've constantly heard a stream of people talking to me about safety issues, concerns about, even when I was in Maniki, vandalism and theft. That was a huge issue, why people wanted to lock doors, which drove me crazy, because people can't get into your office if your door's locked, but they were, things were walking away, small at that level, up into some of the other more major concerns. And particularly, you saw things happening on other college campuses. We are an open campus. That's a very different reality than a lot of other places. I go see my son at school, I can't get past that front door until they know exactly who I am. So we don't do that here. So how do we start to work on a safe environment? So when Director Harrison came in, we had several things that were done. We'd had a comprehensive campus safety study that had been done, and then we had a subsequent one that also looked at how do we start, what recommendations might we act on. She would tell you, even with my own personal safety, which a lot of you all have known about, some of the issues that have been there, I didn't take it seriously. I was like, "You know what, I'm from the south side of Chicago, somebody gonna step at me, I got them," right? Honest to God, I kinda had that, I kinda had that attitude, like I can, I can take care of myself, until people started talking about things that I realized I was fully unequipped to deal with. And when your personal safety is threatened, and then we have people who are working on the front line with sometimes very difficult people who don't often, some people who also have some significant issues that we have to address, we have to be responsive as an organization. So I fully support the recommendations that are coming out of campus safety, because I believe in Director Harrison has done a lot of good work. She's not a novice at this, she's been working on campuses across the state before. And I also recognize that we have to design a campus safety program that's responsive to our culture as well in Montgomery College and Montgomery County. And what that looks like is what we're still trying to figure out. So that's why, Chris, you and others, please feel free to participate in those forums that are gonna take place, because what the Board said, okay, Darian, you and Janet and Sean and Marvin have presented a compelling case as to why we need to explore this and what the implications can be if we do that for safety. But they also said, "We're not gonna do anything until you go back and answer a series of questions." Those questions include, "How do the campuses feel about this particular issue?" "What are the insurance issues that go with this?" "What are the, what was the other one they asked?" "Insurance, policy issues, costs that come with this, both short-term and long-term." And once you come up with that type of information, then come back to us and we'll sit down and say, but the key is to say, "We're open to the dialogue," which I think is an important point to be made. So right now, they've been working on how we go about this process, you're gonna start seeing a series of forums to get people engaged in that, to hear. There's gonna be robust conversation. What I know for sure, because I lived through a campus that went through this debate before, there will be robust conversation. I was trying to tell Chief Harrison, she came to tell me about it, she said, "Okay, we'll do this." I said, "Oh, no, 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 my friend, that's not how it's gonna work. We're gonna have to talk about it and we're gonna talk about it and talk about it some more. By the time we get done talking about it, we'll start all over again, because that's how we are." But that's an important process that we have to honor and then be prepared to move forward with, once we have a clear direction from the Board. Thank you for the question, Chris, I hope that that was responsive to what you asked.
I have a question here from the audience. Carla? I think so.
Good morning, good afternoon. I read recently in the news, and I've been asked recently about temporary protective status. Nicaraguans have been told to leave the country already, and 300,000 Salvadoran and Haitian people are also on the chopping block. And so I was asked, "Is this gonna impact Montgomery College students?" I didn't know the answer, so I'm kinda just putting it out there, maybe something for us to look into. Are they, are TPS holders also eligible for Maryland Dream Act? How will that impact our workforce development students as well? And if not, students directly, just making people aware that many people know someone with temporary protective status who is at risk of being asked to leave the country.
Thank you, Carla. I don't have the answers to that. Like you, I just heard about this, I think, earlier this week, the decision was made. So what I would do right now, as a matter of fact, ask Dr. Brown, Dr. Gregory, if they can give me some notes on this, and Monday SALT meeting will talk about this, so that we can figure out and be able to communicate effectively to the college community. I think one of the struggles that a lot of us have is that this stuff just, no, excuse me, these decisions are made without a lot of engagement with those of us who actually have to operationalize them. And so right now, we, I haven't seen anything that's come into my email as directions from the Department of Education yet. Typically, I try to wait to see if they say something or even if Maryland Attorney General says something, so I haven't heard any of those two things. So let me go back and ask them to do a little research and then hopefully I can get something out to the college community and the broader one next week. Thank you for lifting that up.
You have a question over here? Please stand.
Please stand?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mitchell Troopin.
Yeah.
And I actually want to share an issue brought to me by my students in my Rockville Speech Class. A group of my students there, for an assignment, surveyed MC students in all three campuses on the issue of extending library hours. And they made actually a very valid argument that we need to keep our libraries open on all three campuses beyond 10 o'clock, or at least 10 o'clock, and certainly open them early in the morning. I grew up in a very noisy apartment and I was a pretty mediocre high school student because of that, and I can understand their situation. And I have students who work, but if they could get into the library at 7:00 AM, that hour between 7:00 and 8:00 would be, you know, very valuable to them. So I promised them I would share this with you, and is there a possibility of extending those hours?
Thank you, Professor Troopin. So a couple things related to this is that this has actually been an issue that Student Council raised with me last spring as well. Extended hours in two areas, one libraries, but also a space that we could identify on campus that would be open 24 hours for the purposes you described, for study purposes, quietness, but also access to the internet. So we heard, and there are a couple other requests that started to bubble up in that, you actually, a great introduction to, then Doctors Brown and Warmack got together, because there was probably a list of four or five things that they started to bring up to students. And what we recognize is that we have not done And what we recognize is that we have not done, uh, recently, taken the opportunity to invite students to tell us what type of resources and what types of, um, supports that they may need in order to be successful with the college. So, what we've done, uh, did it go out already?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's going out today. Quite timely. Uh, we, I rem, I wrote, I signed off on my letter. That's how I remember my intro letter. Uh, inviting students is going out to all students and we're surveying them on a series of things that they need, such as library services, uh, connection to the internet, uh, residence halls, sports, other learning services, food services, transportation, all of those types of issues to get that data from them. The students will have roughly two to three weeks to complete the survey. It'll come back in and then we'll start to act on that. I can't immediately respond to that, but I will ask, uh, Director Tanner Ray to, he's not in here, usually here, uh, to go back and give me some information if there's anything that they can do. We are limited in some of those cases because of personnel, uh, because we have not expanded those hours necessarily because of the staffing that we have. Can they be flexed some? Um, I think that's important. We also want to make sure that we have enough people to do that. So, if we go through a process in extending hours to 11:00 or midnight, doing that, to have two people come there would be a problem because that means we've paid a lot of money to make that happen because you also have the tertiary issues of security and facilities as well. So, we've got to do some analysis on that, but thank you for raising that up for your students.
Make sure the response.
You're welcome.
I have a question from Twitter. This is Sharon, who's asking, what can we do to cut down on the high number of students that must take remedial courses as they enter MC?
Thank you, Sher- Sharon tweeted that question to me, I think, the first day Marcus sent out the announcement for the town hall meeting. Sharon sent this question, so I said, I had time to research. So, I got, I got, I got answers for you, Sharon. But here's an important, let me start off by saying this, and, and we were in a meeting a few months ago and we were talking about issue in my SALT group, about issues of equity and inclusion and how we think about this work. And Dr. Rice said something that has been in my head every since, and that's why this work is so important. He said, he said, the first social justice question or equity question that the college asks is when we, uh, a moment is when a student is placed at Montgomery College. I can, that's the first moment where we engage in a decision regarding equity and social justice. And that has stuck with me because I think I, I had not, I find myself fairly articulate, but I was not able, I hadn't come to that decision or that, that observation. And we've been systematically working at this issue about how do we eliminate, uh, these gaps that we see in outcomes, successful outcomes for students in developmental education? Those who linger there. How many of you have taught developmental ed? Yeah. Students can linger in developmental education and at some point, it really becomes a, a question about how long we will allow that and not question ourselves about that as an organization. So, we're doing a couple of things here, I think, that are going to be really important to help reduce those barriers, uh, that Sharon asked about. Uh, one, we're looking at credit for prior learning may help them move more completely out of developmental education in the first place. So, we have an opportunity, we have a work group as a part of the, uh, Academic Master Plan that are, that is looking at, uh, prior learning. A second, alternative placement programs. This is truly critical. Uh, we know that Accuplacer, while it has served a purpose, has not been the most effective way of assessing and placing students. So, right now, looking at Accuplacer and then also pairing that with, uh, grades in certain high school courses, provide students with an opportunity to move into credit bearing classes with the appropriate supports that they need to do that. So, here's the funny part about that. We, year ago, no, last spring, whenever, we te, we piloted this and we said, oh, let's send out a letter to students, say, you qualify. After we get the data, John is doing the math and I don't know, uh, who, well, I'll just say Monica since you're, y'all sit next to each other always. Um, it's the funniest thing. Y'all, it's like the twin, Mike and Ike. Um, so, you have this, we, we sent out these letters to students. So, we said, hey, you qualify for this special program. How many students were eligible for it?
About 800.
About 800 students were eligible for it. 50 actually said, okay, give or take. I remember the number. I don't do the math, but I thought that was a pretty small number. Less than 10% set up and said, oh, I'm, I'm wanting to do this. So, I then said to Dr. Rice, as I was being very thoughtful that day, I said, why are we letting students opt in? Why don't we just, they have to opt out. Why don't we simply say, you are, this is the pathway you're on, and then we allow the students to opt out for whatever reason? So, this year, we're doing that, as a matter of fact. Uh, so, we're looking at, uh, how we place them. We're working with MCPS in that space and we already are seeing some great outcomes that I'll come to in a moment. Uh, developmental English reading and math faculty have redesigned their courses to shorten the pathway to credit bearing classes. And we've also embedded tutors in writing classes such as 101A and the PACE program to allow students to be able to have those additional supports to get them through those courses more successfully. Um, we're also, let's be very honest, we've got to help educate students about how to take the Accuplacer, how to be prepared for that. That is a, uh, it's a high stakes test. And a lot of folks don't realize when you walk in the door, this is really in a lot of ways setting your pedigree academically for the next several years. Let's talk about that with students and help them get prepared. So, the college is seeing improvement. Um, if you look at this in our latest metric of the month, which actually came out, 52% and 44%, uh, 52% of English and 44% of math students took and completed the necessary developmental education in their first year of enrollment at the college, which is also what the CCR, CCA is expecting us to do. And we've been a little slow in implementing that. Uh, part of it has been, has been described as a technology. Uh, how do we get the technology part of this? Uh, I think a lot of it is also a culture issue that we've got to move beyond that. So, these are some of the things that we're going to be addressing. Sharon, thank you for that question, and I'm hopeful that you'll start to see students placing, um, less frequently in developmental education, but more importantly, moving more quickly through it as well. Carolina?
Good morning, Dr. Pollard.
Good morning.
My name is Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
And my, was co-senator, are here today on behalf of our senators, uh, on behalf of the Senate. So, there's an issue that has been brought up to us, the Student Senate, which is the issue of late start classes. So, a lot of students have been complaining about how every, with every semester, there's a decreasing number of late start classes available. And as you know, this issue affects predominantly like part-time students or working students as well. Um, so, we're wondering what is the cause of this issue and what can be done to also remedy it?
This is why I love our students, um, because they always keep me on my point. So, I didn't anticipate this question. Uh, so, I'm going to lob it in a minute to a few other people, but I want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. Uh, the college has been very deliberate over the last, um, year in particular, uh, looking how to ensure that classes that are actually in the schedule are the classes that are delivered, so students don't experience cancellations in those. So, there have been a monumental amount of data that has been looked at, both in terms of, uh, courses that enroll, enrollment in courses that go, enrollment in courses that we say can't go, where do those students go to? How, what is our pipeline? What is the communication strategy with students? And as a result of that, while we may have seen fewer late start classes, we've seen an increase in actual occupancy or fill rates of those classes that we actually do deliver, which at the end, at some point, hopefully for us, not only provides students a guarantee of a, of a schedule, but also allows us to plan more effectively, which I know, uh, Provost Latimer is leading a group with, uh, Dr. Trent and some others as it relates to our, our course scheduling. Now, specifically about late start classes, I don't know. Someone see if anybody in the audience I can tag in who may know about this phenomenon that you're describing. I see Dr. Rice pointing to somebody. I don't know, Dean La, uh, Dean, Provost Latimer, might you?
I thought maybe Mike.
Or one of the folks in front of you. Yeah, Mike and Ike might.
Sure. Yes, I can, I can address that. And you've done a brilliant job, actually. You've cou, you've covered a lot, um, in terms of where we're going. There is, there's an academic master plan, which you may have heard of, and one of the initiatives of that plan is to review scheduling, how we schedule. Part of that has been to look at seat utilization. It is costly. It might be nice when you are one of 10 students in a class at a time that is convenient. It's expensive when you are one of 10 students in a class that has a capacity of 20 or 25. So, one of the things we've looked at is seat utilization. So, we are actually offering fewer sections than we used to. So, that impact that you're seeing in terms of fewer sections, late start, is really fewer sections across the board. We, we define start times by parts of term. I won't get into that, although it is really fun to talk about pot in the academic sense. Um, so, we are going to reduce the number of parts of term. There are nine now. So, one of the things we're looking at is what we think of as the beginning of the semester, that August start date, that late January start date, a midterm, so at the eighth week start date, and then another late start term. And we're actually looking at the date, the data now to see whether a two week or three week late start serves students better. If you went back a few years, you would see the number of late start classes actually increased. They were added when we went to on-time registration because we wanted to be able to accommodate students who arrived too late for on-time registration. So, there was an increase, but one of the implications of that, one of the things that we had not anticipated is what the low enrollment impact would be. So, we are, we are looking at all of that right now. What we hope to come up with, I wouldn't say hope, we will come up with, is a plan where there will most likely be four parts of term, four different times during any semester when classes start. What we think of as the traditional beginning, traditional midterm, and a late start, um, so that we can, students will be able to predict and we'll guarantee what is offered at those times. Um, so, we hope it'll be easier to plan, not just for the current semester, but looking out future semesters. Does that help? Okay.
Thank you to our outstanding Student Senate for their, their questions. Our student leaders always keep us on point. Thank you.
We have another question, uh, online, and it's, why can't transgender students change their names in Banner?
Hmm. So, uh, a couple of things. A Banner doesn't necessarily allow that. So, there are a couple of things, uh, this question came in early and I can do that. So, one is that students can always legally change their names. They have a legal name change, they can bring that in, the appropriate documentation, that can be changed immediately. And the registrar's office can update it in the Banner system when that comes in. Uh, preferred methods for a new name to be reflected in a, uh, class roster, online service screen, et cetera, can be a part of that when it comes into the, into the Banner system. A student can request a preferred name change by going to the registrar and filling out a form. So, uh, preferred names are different, obviously, than what your official, your government name is, right? So, you want to make sure that you can go in and you can complete a form and that information can be put in. What's going to be very exciting about that is that at the end of, of November, we are launching our new, uh, Workday system, which will allow students to enter their preferred name and it can be reflected in their correspondence from the college and other ways in which we interact with them. Staff members in Workday, you can also change your preferred first or last name, the supervisor just has to approve it. So, uh, we are trying to make sure that we be responsive as an organization, uh, that practices equity and inclusion. Uh, we're always looking for invitations and opportunities to enhance how we do this work. And thank you all who've brought this to our attention. So, legally, you can bring the information, give a preferred name, there's a form as a student you can complete, and as an employee, you can request that and your supervisor can make that happen. If anybody has a problems, let me know, we can have that conversation. Thank you. Yeah.
Another question, uh, from Karen King, and the question is, I'm taking a WDCE class in the evening in the South Campus Instruction Building on the Rockville campus. On more than one occasion, I have observed potential students walk up to the Welcome Center only to find it closed. I noticed that all of the Welcome Centers across the college are only open from 9:00 to 5:00. Wouldn't it make sense for the Welcome Center to have some evening hours to accommodate potential students who can make it to the college during the day?
So, who asked that question?
Karen King.
Karen, thank you for that. Uh, what I would offer is a couple of things. One is that I might, uh, I've actually going to charge a few people to look at that across the institution. I think Student Affairs is always do, is already doing that as a part of the STAMP program. How do we offer a more robust, uh, evening program and support services? Isn't just a Welcome Center issue, it's a food service issue, as we've heard, it's a library issue, it's all the places the students who are here in the evenings need some additional support for. Uh, currently, how our Welcome Centers, uh, staffing is, is done, as you described, um, nine to, well, let me say, ta, they close it, they open at 8:30, close at 5:00, and they track, uh, the periods when students need them most and it's driven by demand about their hours. However, I think your point is well taken and if no one's there in the evening to know, we don't necessarily know if, if there's a profound need for that. So, I think you've given us an opportunity for us to get some of that information, which might be able to be a part of the survey, uh, that we just sent out to students today that's going to have that. However, when a student, our visitor to the Welcome Center, uh, has a question, they can actually send it an email, uh, to response@montgomerycollege.edu, and they can have a response within 24 hours. It doesn't help right in that moment. I hear you, very thoughtful about that, but at least there's an opportunity for us to get information back to students and visitors within 24 hours. And I certainly, uh, would welcome the opportunity, uh, to see what comes back in the student survey about their interests and needs as it relates to more evening services and hours. Thank you for that question, Karen.
So, unless somebody here has a question? Uh, I've got one from Lucy.
I'm going to let the online people get all the questions. All right.
So, this question is from Lucy, and her, she's asking, why is it not an option to recalculate tuition after a student moves to Montgomery County and is already enrolled? But the reverse is, question mark. Paying triple the tuition for three months after moving into the county or state does not make sense.
Hmm. I can appreciate the question that you raised, Lucy, but there are two mitigating factors as to why that happens. Uh, the big one is the state requires it. Uh, the state says that you have to go through a process of three months to establish your residency in the state, and then they will allow us then to calculate that. And there's a date and there's a form that we send out to students. Now, you can go in and appeal and have your residence changed based on that. The second reason is that, um, we have, um, trying to figure out how not to show so much of the sausage that has to be made. In order for the college to receive its money from the state, we have a date by which we submit the students and credit hours that they've attended at the college to the state. And as a result of that, we call that census date. We don't get to change a lot about students after census date. So, those are the two reasons why we can't do that, Lucy. I appreciate the point, three times the tuition is not a joke. I understand that. But the state requires, one, that it is three months, um, and they need to ver, and they go through, you have to verify certain types of things and we have to do that. And then, secondly, more, uh, equally important is the census date, that we are not allowed to change certain records after we've submitted them to the state. Thank you.
This question is from a former MC employee, Kathy Stevens. Thank you for everything MC does. Talk about the success of your efforts to bring the college to the community, specifically the community engagement centers in places like Gaithersburg and specifically East County. And what is next for MC to be able to reach people where they are?
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Kathy. We miss you, although now you're not too far from us again over at McHale, which is close now to CT, where we are. So, thank you, Kathy. And Kathy, a couple of things that she knows, that we're, she sits on the Community Engagement Roundtable, it's a group of community partners who come and meet with me probably quarterly to talk about issues that are relevant to the community, but also services and programs which the college can partner with or align ourselves with on certain issues to advance the community. I personally think that one of the best jobs at the college is Carlos, a Director of Community Engagement, and she points out, she's not responsible for community engagement, she's helping the college be responsible for community engagement. And that's a beautiful part about this. I heard this, and this is how, just those of you who don't know, how we started this role in this work. I was actually sitting in a meeting with a number of college presidents in DC, and one of them was the president of the seminary there. And he talked about the fact that they had done a study, an intense study, of all these churches that were adjacent to the seminary, and that they were spending, contrary to their mission, about 75% to 85% of their resources, both fiscal, people, whatever the case may be, on their parishioners, but not on the communities they were charged to serve. He says, "They started an initiative where they were turning the church inside out." Now, call me crazy, I grew up in the church, and that resonated with me deeply, this idea of turning yourself inside out to focus on your mission and the community that you served. So for me, that resonated when I thought about the college. We saw, we see shifting demography that's happening in our community and college. We see a community, quite frankly, that does not know that they can come to us, and we struggle with that. How do we meet them where they are? So the community engagement centers are a byproduct of that. So several things that we're doing in this space, Kathy, one is that we're exploring additional community engagement centers, whether that be, one is, I want to brand one that we already have with the Montgomery County Detention Center, because that's an important population that we cannot forget about, because as Chief Warden, the Warden always says, "How do we want them back?" Warden Green always says that, so I think that's important. How do we start to do mobile things? That's going to be a huge thing. We need a big donor to come in and help us with that, because I want to create a big old roving RV or something, bus, that we can go to and people know the college is coming to them. Because here's the thing, there are a lot of people, particularly in our immigrant community, for whom college is seen as other. And I had this wonderful African gentleman explain this, and he said, "College just seems so far away." And he lives probably not even a mile and a half from this campus, and I said to him, I said, "What do you mean, it's so far away?" He said, "It just seems so far away, because college was seen for the other. It was for those who are highly, who had wealth, who had access and all these things." If our community is changing around us in this county, how are we being responsive to that? And the last thing we're doing in this space is really taking time to redefine our nature and definition of partnerships and alliances, and how do we start to build an infrastructure to actually document the work we're doing and be able to say at the end of the day how we did this work? So, those are some of the things we're doing, and I'm quite excited about it, and I'm very grateful for our community partners who help us become better at this work.
Hi, my name's Shane Doyle, I'm the Staff Council Chair, and I had a question about the Ombuds Report, had mentioned that there were staff who felt worried that they would be retaliated against, that they sought help through the Ombuds Office or any other mechanism for seeking assistance, and that people had felt they were already discouraged, in fact, from doing so, that, that they had been explicitly discouraged from doing so, and I was curious how the college is responding to that.
Thank you, Shane, for the question. So when you, before the report comes out, our Ombuds comes to sit down with me, and this has happened with both Sarah and now Julie, and was very, actually, I don't even know if my memo just went out, it probably went out this morning, so, did it already go out, Ombuds?
It'll go out in hours.
Okay, thank you. It's going on the hour, we're just going to ask, no, no, this is, here's a preview for all the listening audience. So here, really, and when she, and we go through, and they, both Ombuds have given me, here are the things we're doing really, really well, and they kind of take me through this, and then they say, "And Dr. P, here are the things you need to understand that we're not doing well. And here are some of the concerns that have been raised. Without names, without departments, unless a person has said they can tell me, they tell me about this." And they gave me an example of an employee who actually was reprimanded by a supervisor for having come to the Welcome, I mean, to the Ombuds, and I was flabbergasted, in a bad way, because I think that's completely unacceptable. And it's fortunate that I don't know who that is, because we would have had a very intense conversation. What I can offer is this, that will not be the case, and if I hear about it again, it's going to be a real problem. Because the reality of the day, the Ombuds is a service of all employees at the college. It's an opportunity for you to come and figure out what are your pathways through the organization, it's an opportunity for coaching, it's an opportunity to role-play and figure out how you're going to do, it's a way to actually find out where you go to get something figured out. And to be quite frank, it's also a place where somebody can help give you perspective about the issue that you may raise a concern, or even give you positive affirmation about what you're doing. And if we can't live in an organization where that exists, and we have supervisors who get uncomfortable with that, then I'm uncomfortable, and people don't like me to be uncomfortable as a president. That's true, right? And as a result of that, we're not going to tolerate it. So one of the, as a result of the work that our Ombuds did, she offers a report that went out, as you described, today in an hour, I have a responses going out, and one of the ones is to build in language regarding that in our existing policies about this, to protect employees who feel this way, and there's some additional training that needs to happen. And then I've also asked our Ombuds and some other areas to meet quarterly to talk about these issues, and then our Ombuds is also meeting with every division leader to sit down and talk about, "Here are the issues in your area, let's talk about how we're going to address them," and you go one by one through that. It's unacceptable, and I don't, I believe we're better than that as an organization, and I certainly expect my managers and supervisors to be better than that. Thank you, Shane.
Hi, I'm Vicki Drake, and I'm the interim Campus Library Manager here, and I just wanted to follow up about a comment, just to reiterate that the libraries do hear the comments about our hours, and we take them very seriously, and I know that we explore ways to help continue to serve students even when we're closed, and we do try to provide resources, but we know it is an issue that comes up, because students, of course, would love for us to be, and we would love to be open 24/7 and have staff and all that. But, but I do know that we will also, Tanner, the Director, and the leadership team will continue to look into this and explore more and see what we can do.
Thank you. So let me tell you how funny this is. I, so whoever, somebody in here said something to Tanner about it, either Twitter or emailed him, so I'm sitting here while somebody was talking a minute ago, and it pops up, Tanner says, "Whoa, what was the question? I'm out of town." So, I love it, I talk about responsiveness, this is the best for me. So, thank you, and he must have emailed you, I don't know what happened, so, thank you very much, we're glad to have you, and thank you for that response.
Hi, my name is Cindy, a Student Senator, and on behalf of the students here, we were wondering if we could have longer hours of services when it comes to MC Shuttle buses throughout all three campuses.
Oh, so, one of the things in this survey that we're, that's actually going out today or sometime this week, is, is asking people about those hours. So, this again, students, we, those of you who've been a part of this know where the shuttle bus came from, and thank you for the question. It came from the students asking and raising in similar form as this, "Why don't we have a shuttle that runs between campuses? If we're going to be more efficient with our schedule, if we're going to be very deliberate about making sure the students have access to courses, that's how we got the shuttle about two years ago." And we have continuously expanded it every time that we've done it. In fact, the first year, we only ran between two campuses, now we run through all three campuses and CT. We only had routes certain ways, and now we have them multiple ways. And then the last time Dr. Walmart came to see me, she happened to get bigger buses. So, here's the reality about this. This is an expensive proposition. We do it because we know it's important for our students, and if there are ways in which we can expand it, we will do that. I asked our students, who are, got me live right now, I'd ask our students to go back and have your colleagues complete the survey that they're going to get. If you, if I get, the survey goes out and I get 20 people who responded, I have no evidence to go back and ask the county, the state, and the, actually, the board, the county and the state for more money to be able to expand the hours. Or if I choose to reallocate money from someplace else within the organization, I need evidence that this is what's actually the need of students. So please, 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 have students complete those surveys and get those back and make sure they talk about the issues that are most important to them. Thank you. We got three minutes left. Any other questions in the room?
Right here. Ms. Millicent?
Hi, I'm Melissa Pace, and I had a question. Tacoma Park Student Senate Representative called me and left a message on my phone, and I couldn't make out their name, and when I called back, you know, I didn't, I didn't get a response right away, but they're, they were inquiring about the digital signage initiative and wanted to know more about it rolling out on the campuses and what that meant for students, and I thought I would bring that up, and maybe my boss, Ray Gilmer, wants to address that?
Thank you very much for that. This is what I call managing up. Mr. Gilmer?
Thanks, I think, Melissa, for that question. Yes, quickly, yes, digital, the digital signage pilot has been running for the past few months. Some of you might have noticed that some of the display panels that have been around the campuses have had a new look, it's a branded look, it shows the shuttle bus schedule, it can show the other bus schedules, announcements campus-wide, we think it's a great way to keep everybody informed, and it's also a good student success strategy, because it helps remind students about deadlines and new classes that might be available. We have lots more displays around the campus that are not really interconnected to the system, but we're rolling them out soon, we're adding new hardware behind them, and I hope in the next few months, four months, we're going to have 100-plus screens that are part of this digital system.
Very good. Thank you, Ray. The other thing that I'll say about that, I really want to thank the team of, you know, communications, IT facilities, for the signage outside of the campuses now that we have it, Germantown and Rockville that joined the work that we have here at Tacoma Park. This has been phenomenal. I, I have to tell you, I get more emails and text messages from people, "Saw the signage, it's so great, it made me aware of the college." Which I kind of had to go back and ask them, "Why weren't you aware before?" So, important, thank you all very much for that, because I think it helps to continue to advance our brand in the community.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pollard, and thank you for all of you for participating. Please keep an eye on the President's Corner Message on Monday, and also Inside MC Online for the next Town Hall, which is scheduled to be in February at the Rockville campus. And as always, you can stay informed on social media, following Montgomery College and Montgomery College Television. Thank you all so much, it's been a great day.